I'd like to call this January 20, 2021, City Council Meeting to Order. Rogue call, please, Mr. Navarro.
Mayor Sanchez?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Keim?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Weiss?
Here.
We're going to begin with Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, we're going to have one presentation. Please stand. Oh, excuse me. First, the invocation. Please stand. And we do have Pastor Sheldon with us. Good evening, Pastor Sheldon. Thank you for joining us. Actually, it's the -- it's you. Your invocation first, please.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Rushing through here.
Well, if we can all join together and bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we invite you to bless everyone and preside over tonight's council meeting for the city of Oceanside. We pray for the safety of all our first responders and military personnel. We may have different opinions, but give us unity of spirit. Help us to listen politely to everyone when sharing their point of view. Help us to work as a unified team and combine the ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals to promote a unified front to serve the people of Oceanside. May we have a spirit of compassion for one another as we work together to support and serve the city of Oceanside. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we do have one presentation. And that is the winner of this year's thirty -- I believe it's 34th Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Committee Service Award. And that is retired Lieutenant Colonel Eddie Beckham. Good evening, Mr. Beckham.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm great, thank you, ma'am.
Well, I hope you have a few words ready for us because it was such a wonderful event, what we would normally have as a prayer breakfast. We had a wonderful program put out by the NAACP of North Scania County. And part of that program was to announce, and we did announce, the winner of this year's award. And you were joined by, I believe, four other people. And you came out on top because of all the things you've done for us here in the city of Oceanside. So, thank you so much for your service, retired Lieutenant Colonel Eddie Beckham. Could you say a few words for us?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Mayor Sanchez, of course, to the council. I am the city of Oceanside. I sincerely and am very humbled to be selected as this year's award winner. It's something that I never thought possible. As a citizen of Oceanside for officially the last 22 years now, as of this date, it's my pleasure to work with the city, to support the community, and the NAACP and all the other civic organizations that are here to do the things that we as citizens of our city need to do to help other citizens. So I am very humbled to receive this award, and thank you very much. It has been delivered.
Yay. Oh, that looks really nice, especially your name, right?
It's outstanding. And I'm truly honored and thankful to have been selected to receive it.
And your picture will be in the committee rooms of the Oceanside Public Library for all of us to see as you join the other winners of this phenomenal award. Thank you very much. Can we give them a great big applause? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez. There was no closed session, so there will be no report.
Thank you. Next, consent calendar items. Any requests to poll?
Item number nine has been pulled by the public.
Thirteen.
Nine, eleven.
Thirteen.
And thirteen. And I'd actually like to pull item number 12. So, motion for the balance?
Second.
Okay. Okay. Motion second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, first one up is number nine.
An item number nine.
That is approval of change order, number nine, to the Public Works Agreement with PCL Construction for the construction of the El Corazon Aquatic Center in the amount of $232,144 for a total revised contract amount of $20,827,300 and authorization for the city engineer to execute the change order. Who do we have staff to address this issue?
We also have public on this item.
Okay. Let's go ahead and
Do the public?
Present the public.
Okay. Okay. Our first speaker is -- our only speaker is Midori Simovic. And we do need you to unmute yourself so we can hear you. Midori Simovic?
Yes?
Okay. Whenever you're ready, you can start.
Somehow my -- I'm sorry. Somehow my video came on, too. Is that okay? I don't know. I didn't do that.
Yes, you can start.
Okay. Okay. Mayor Sanchez and the council members, my name is Midori Simovic, and I represent Friends of El Corazon. We would like to remind you that the El Corazon specific plan includes sustainability provisions. We are disappointed to see that several design decisions that have been made are not consistent with the provisions, and they were not presented to the public. After looking at the change orders, our concerns are that the change orders already approved include over 24K for changes to accommodate the arena, a project that is not approved and has had no public hearings. If the project is approved, will the city costs get reimbursed by the developer? Regarding the SDG gas line constructions, we wonder that happened -- what happened to the original talk of installing solar panels to save energy costs? We wonder which facilities require gas lines and for what purposes? We feel that the installation of solar panels over the parking lots may be a lot more cost-effective and eco-friendly in the long run. We regret that city has installed artificial turf in the park without asking citizens' input. There are several environmental concerns associated with artificial turf, including loss of wildlife habitat, contaminated runoff, and migration of synthetic material. Contaminants that are harmful to aquatic life, such as zinc, have been found in stormwater runoff from artificial turf. Finally, Friends of El Corazon is deeply concerned that the city has been moving forward without involving citizens and the community leaders in making decisions over our park and surrounding lands. And would like to see the city involving the citizens in future decisions. We request the city to hold open and public workshops and forums, inviting citizens and the community leaders. Thank you for your time. And happy new year to yours, by the way.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comment.
Thank you. And so, from the staff report, it looks like it's from additional underground conflicts, design changes, and staff requested upgrades for better security and safety, which apparently were not presented as part of the project at the time of approval?
Honorable Mayor?
Thank you.
City Council Brian Thomas, city engineer. That is correct. There were a number of things that occurred during construction that just didn't make sense once the design was actually getting ready to be implemented. Some of the requirements that came through had to do for better use of the equipment, especially with the recreational side of it, pool lanes, just to make it a better product all around at the end of the day. Some of the other things had to do with, again, additional unknown utility conflicts that just fell apart during the design. There's just no other way to put it. And then, certain things that were just completely missed, such as site security cameras, things along those lines that needed to be addressed at those points.
Okay. I believe there were some questions by council members. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, I pulled this item. Just come see, and it's the ninth change order. I understand projects in areas like this, especially with the soils in that area, you know, you're going to have change orders. And a lot of them were authorized under the updated council policy. I guess my biggest question is, is how many more can we expect? You know, where's the limit here? I think we're above, if we add up the total increase, we're pushing close to 4% above, you know, estimated, initial estimated costs. And I know staff's working on putting together the maintenance and operating plan and costs. And I am already going to estimate that's going to come back a lot higher than what was estimated initially upon approving a bond. What else do you see coming up? You know, I know the project's been extended significantly, like 160 days or so. What else do you see coming up? You know, that -- anything?
We -- Councilmember Rodriguez, we do have at least one more change order coming to finalize the project for some added things, again, that were just missed off the plans and some additional things that we felt would make the site better usable in the end. And there are just some fit and finish items that were also missed on the architect's side that we're dealing with. So there's going to be at least one more change order. Construction's almost complete at this point. The reason we've got such a long extension is contractually, we have to give that to the contractor and their subcontractors. Because if we were to hold them to what they're doing now, even say they completed tomorrow, and they're by no means ready to complete tomorrow. I want to make that clear. But if they were ready to complete tomorrow, and we didn't address these time changes, then the contractor has the right to go back to their subs and say, you know, you cost us all this extra money at the end of the day, so therefore you owe less liquidated damages. And it really protects everybody involved. It protects the city, protects the contract, protects the subcontractors at the end. There's a statement that we use in the industry that the project owns the float, not the city, not the contractor. So by giving them this time as we move forward at the end of the day, then everybody's protected. So nobody can make a claim at the end of the day that they were harmed in any way.
Okay. In reference to the public speaker's comments about sustainability and utilizing the rooftops and putting solar, and I know we're already, you know, the expenditures have gone up, but in my mind, the solar will pay for itself. So at what point was that ever considered? And at what point, if it hasn't, at what point would we consider that? Because that'll definitely offset the maintenance schedule.
Yes. And Councilman Rodriguez, that question was asked early on. And the answer that I was given is, we can install solar. The bleachers and the rooftops have been designed to accommodate solar panels, so no additional work would need to be done. I forget the exact reason why we didn't move forward with it at that time. But I can look into it and send it correspondence through the city manager's office.
I would like to modify this motion in approving and see if I can get support for city staff as a part of that final change order, bring back the installation of solar. I think that's a well-spent investment. It's going to meet the plan we have for El Corazon and help offset those long-term costs. Do I have any other support for that?
Ms. Larson, I do know that the city has been looking at installing panels at various city buildings. And there is a priority, is there not a list? Was the senior center on that list?
Mayor, council members, Dianne Larson, city manager. So, the city did complete a solar project within the last few years where we did install solar panels on a number of city facilities. I will need to check in with staff to identify, are there additional facilities that we should look at for another round of solar? Certainly seems like it would be a wise investment for the future sustainability of the city. And, you know, projects do need to be evaluated kind of on a case-by-case basis, given their particulars, what the potential savings will be, the condition of the structure and so forth. But I am aware of at least one other city facility that is a likely candidate for solar at this time. So we can certainly do that research and report back to council.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez, would you modify your amendment to direct staff to explore the feasibility and come back with costs?
For the aquatic center, correct?
This is all part of the senior center, the El Corazon Senior Center, right? It would have to be part of the whole project would include the senior center?
Yeah. In the end, I just, I think it's smart, before we have families and high schools practicing there, that we get this work done. And that's kind of a last step button-up anyway on any development project. You know, the solar crews come in at the end. And so, it would be wise to have those numbers and potentially move forward on that now as a part of this umbrella than to wait later. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's a modified motion. We would just bring us numbers back and to see if we can add that on as a part of this, you know, culmination of this project.
It's certainly a very busy place, the senior center. And it certainly is going to be expanding when we have the aquatic center open. So it seems like a likely candidate. Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you. I would support doing an assessment to see if solar would be appropriate for not just the aquatic center, but the whole senior center complex. And I would say, if it comes back, that it is something that you can do, I would be okay with just sending us a memo saying, here's what the costs are going to be, and move forward with it. Because if you have to try to schedule it for another council meeting, my concern is you're going to start running out of time.
Yeah.
So if it is something that comes back that's feasible, if it is a, you know, a lifecycle cost savings for that whole facility, I would be supportive of you moving forward, just letting us know.
Is that acceptable?
I agree.
Okay, so that would be a motion by Peter for the amendment.
I'll second that.
And, okay. Do we have any other comments?
And I would move forward with staff recommendation at this time, with that change.
With that amendment? Or with that change? Okay. No other lights, please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item number 11. That is approval of a professional service agreement with Richard Brady and Associates to provide a harbor facility condition survey, short-term maintenance plan, and financial needs assessment for a total contract price of $399,555 and authorization for the city manager, administrative officer, to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. Thank you. And there were no comments from the public. Is that correct, Mr. Navarro?
There is no public comment on item number 11.
I pulled this item. I want to just present concern in meeting with city staff and touring the facilities and areas, the retail spaces that we're renting out, and just really having a hard discussion on, you know, A plus B equals C. There's a lot of deferred maintenance going on in that harbor, period. And we're about to spend $400,000 to tell us that we're not going to be able to afford the deferred maintenance that's coming up. It, that's just, it's a waste of money to me. I really think if we're going to spend money on a consultant, we need to spend money on a specialized consultant that's going to, you know, not only tell us what we already know, but tell us, how can we make additional funds to cover these costs? What sort of opportunities do we have to change our current business model that we've been doing for, you know, since the stinking harbor existed? To be able to afford the millions and millions of dollars under the enterprise account of, you know, renovations that that harbor truly needs? It's a gem. We have a lot of opportunity there. But if we don't think outside the box and have a developer present some, you know, 30,000-foot perspective of, hey, you can do this with this area to create additional revenue. You could, you know, do this here. You know, we have some subleases. We have some residential. Yeah, they're creating revenue, but what can we do to create significantly more revenues with our harbor so that we don't have to put this on the backs of slip payers? Because that's what it's going to come back and say, is we're going to have to raise fees. I mean, where else are we going to get the money from other than retail spaces and the slip owners? That's what's going to come back. Meanwhile, we just spent $400,000 on something we already know it's going to say. So I would really like to hold off on this item, take a step back and really go, you know, I respect that we're moving forward on this. I think it's important, but I think it's going to tell us what we already know. And it's really not going to give us ideas of how to get where we need to go. Because it's not going to create additional opportunities for us. Yeah, I may say you need to cut some staff here, or, you know, you can increase revenues here. But those are things that we already know we can do. What we need is a comprehensive outlook of creating additional revenues to facilitate the future of the harbor, period. And so I just, I think this, I would like to hold off on this $400,000 and go back to the Harbor and Beach Committee and say, hey, we need to look at the next two, you know, we're doing our general plan update. You know, let's look at what opportunities we can create in this harbor to create the additional revenues that we all know we're going to need outside of what we have here, and then pay for a consultant to do it that way instead of, you know, this is 400 grand that's just going to tell us what we already know. Sorry, I said that like five times, but anyway, I'm done. If anybody else has any comments on that.
Kyle, you're going to give us a presentation, obviously. I understand that this has been brought before the Harbor and Beaches Advisory Committee, but without any costs associated with, you know, the study and a 15-year plan, right? This is supposed to be a short-term, 15-year plan. A lot of the assets are nearing their usefulness, right? So, why is it so much, $400,000?
Honorable Mayor, council members, Kyle Cogar, Public Works Director. So, this is a very thorough assessment of all the assets in the harbor. They'll look at docks, gangways, piles. They'll do above and below water inspection. So they'll actually put divers in the water and go and look at all the docks. They'll look at all the utilities. They'll look at parking lots. There's a whole host of things they'll have to look at. Just to give you an example, we're replacing or getting ready to start construction on J dock. It's one of about 30 to 35 docks we have in the harbor. The cost of that is $3.2 million. That's what's one dock. It's about 35 years old. The other 30 docks are around that age. They might be a little bit younger or whatever. But, so we know in the next few years, all of this work is going to come due. That's $100 million in assets right there. But, yeah, $400,000 is a lot of money, but it's a very thorough assessment. They will come up with a 15-year maintenance plan to kind of tell us, okay, this is the Band-Aids or whatever you need to do over the next 15 years just to get you through that period. And then come up with a financial needs assessment of raising fees or new fees or whatever we have to do to get us through that 15 years. The next plan is to actually come up with a harbor master plan. So after this, to come up with a, go forward with a harbor master plan to look at some of the, how can we use the land in different uses or whatnot? So that's kind of the thinking behind this.
So the first $200,000 of the 400 is available in the administrative account. And it's, the available funds there are $262,609. Where, what were you, what were you going to propose? How you, what were you going to propose to be able to pay for the balance?
So that's for this fiscal year.
Right.
We need $200,000 until January 1. And then at that time, we'll have more savings. We even have a reserve account to take the other $200,000. But this is just saying, it's about--
This year?
Exactly. It's about a one-year study. So, you know, we should be coming back with some results if we go forward with this in about a year.
Any other comments? Do we have any? Do we have a motion? Councilmember Weiss?
I'll move approval of staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. My comments here, I did also wonder, once the $400,000 is paid, how are we going to afford what is going to be proposed? The first dock is being worked on at, what, was it $3.2 million?
Yes, ma'am.
So, obviously, the funds are there for that.
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess it would be a priority. As funds are accumulated, that's the work that will get done up to 15 years?
Exactly. So we, you know, we bring in revenue every year, and we obviously spend money for various things. We usually have savings at the end of every year. That's what we put into reserves. And then that's what we do, our capital program with the reserve amount. And I think over the last couple of years, we've been saving about half a million dollars that we've been putting towards our capital reserves.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss? Did you have a, okay. Councilmember Rodriguez, did you have some other comments? Okay.
What would be the harm in moving on a master plan first before this assessment?
I just think we need to bridge that gap to get, you know, like I said, we have one of 30 docks that we're replacing. We have 29 others that are in that same condition or close to being at a point where they're going to need something. I think we need to bridge the gap by looking, assessing, looking at the maintenance plan short-term, and then coming back with a master plan after that.
When was this done last?
I can't answer that. They've had a couple of inventory assessments over the years by various groups, but it's been a while, and I'm not sure. I don't know that one has been done this thorough before either.
Right. I think it's been project by project.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Council, okay. No other comments? Please vote. Oh, did you, Councilmember Weiss, did you want to-
I just wanted to say I believe it was 2003 when the KMA study was done. Okay.
Thank you. Please vote. And you're going to work very closely-
Motion approved, 3-1. Rodriguez, no?
Thank you. Going to work very closely with the Harbor and Beaches Advisory Committee on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Item number 12. Approval of a professional service agreement with Johnson Favaro of Culver City in the amount of 294,910 dollars to complete a feasibility study for Phase 2 of the beachfront improvement project and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Good evening. Good evening. Yes, and I was the one that pulled this. Any other comments from the public? Okay. When I was reading the, the staff report, I noticed that there was discussion that, that part of the project would include the community beach center. And in the past, I've always understood that that was not going to be part of the beach improvements project. It was going to center on the, uh, the ban shell and the amphitheater. So this is the first time I'm seeing that it's going to also include the beach community center, which is part of the park, public parkland.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Uh, Dara Wood, Senior Civil Engineer in the Engineering Department. Um, based on my information with the project, it was including the senior center and the amphitheater and all the areas in between. Um, we can always make any amendments that we would need to, but this, the senior center is included as part of the study.
It's actually not a senior center. It's a beach community center.
I apologize. Junior S.A.O. Community Center.
Yes.
Switching the S's. Jonathan, maybe you might be able to-
Mr. Bregga, did you have something else to add?
Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers, I just wanted to mention that, um, as you may recall, uh, in May of 2020, um, I gave a presentation to this body seeking authorization to proceed with the RFP. And during that presentation, I, I did explain the full scope of the project and that it would include the community center as well. So, um, I just want to make sure that there's an understanding that this isn't a change that we're dropping at the last minute in terms of the scope of the project. That was, uh, communicated to council, um, back in May. And if I wasn't clear on that point during my presentation, I apologize.
Right. I, I don't, I don't believe, because it's, it is something that is pretty sacred on, um, as part of the public parkland that is, um, there on the beach. So the beach community center, what changes would you be looking to do?
I think essentially just making sure that, you know, the space within the community center initially. Anyway, obviously, we're going to be going through a public participation process. And through that process, we expect to solicit community feedback on what, if any, improvements may need to be made to that center based on community input. But, you know, going into this project, I would, you know, um, essentially think that, you know, whether or not any of the facilities within that building need to be modernized to make more efficient use of the space, any potential facility upgrades that, um, need to be made to essentially ensure, you know, the, um, the long-term use of that facility moving forward. So nothing radical at this point. I know that when we last, went through this last round of community outreach, um, you know, I, I am aware of the discussions that went on for the entire area. And so, you know, again, just making sure that, uh, we're designing or looking at that facility, looking out into the future and its potential use and longevity, really. And, uh, if there are improvements that can be made to, you know, extend its lifespan or improve, uh, the use of the facility, uh, through internal improvements, those sorts of things. But again, I think, you know, my understanding is this process is also going to be largely driven by the community outreach that we do. So I also want to be respectful and acknowledge that there could be some ideas that come out of that process, uh, that we would take a look at. And obviously, this body will make the final decision in terms of the scope of the improvements made.
Right. So, um, the, nothing can go higher than Pacific Street because of Robbe. And it is one of two, uh, indoor gyms, uh, basketball courts in the whole city. So there is definitely a, a need for that. I mean, we need more than that. Um, so I just have concerns. I want to make sure that, uh, this is, this is a, a facility that is in high demand by the community. Um, we don't have enough space for the, for the need. And, um, um, I, I, I very, very much want to ensure that we retain the uses there, which is a, a public parkland, um, facility on public parkland, which could not be privatized in any way, um, without going, without getting on the ballot.
Yeah, absolutely.
So changing the use would be very difficult to do. And, and I just don't support that. I, I really want to continue to make sure that this is part of, uh, the recreational that we offer at the beach. Um, and Councilmember Weiss?
Yes, and, and I, I understand Mayor Sanchez's issues, um, but it is consistent with what you had told us back when you did your presentation. And I look forward to seeing what improvements and enhancements we can do in that whole area that would beautify and, and provide the community a broader asset. And I would move approval of staff recommendation.
Okay. Um, my concern was the way the staff report was written. It, it made it sound like there was possibly a, a different use. So I want to make sure that that does not happen. So we have a motion in a second. No other speakers. Please vote.
Motion approved, 3-0, with Sanchez abstaining.
Next item, number 13. Approval of a professional services agreement in the amount of 63,580 with M.W. Steel Group of San Diego for the design work of modifications to the Civic Center Library Courtyard. Did someone call this?
I did.
Yes. And authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. Ms. Cosby, um, was that a public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. This was pulled by-
By, by me.
Councilmember Weiss?
Uh, my only, the only comment I want to make and I, I will move approval of staff recommendation is as part of the professional services agreement, it identifies, um, some additional information as contained in Exhibit A and that exhibit's not attached. So, um, I'm fine with, with where you're going, but I would like to have seen what the, what the design professionals had in their little Exhibit A as far as what they were going to look at. Uh, so with that, I will move approval of staff recommendation.
Is there a second? Okay. Motion, uh, motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. Now we're on to general items. Uh, Ms. Cosby, if you'll come back up. Should have stayed there. Uh, we're on to item number 15, which is the approval of the library strategic plan update for 2021 to 2023.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, Sherri Cosby, Library Director. I'm here tonight to present the library's strategic plan update for 2021 to 2023. Staff and the Library Board of Trustees recommend that the city council approve the library strategic plan update for 2021 to 2023. This strategic plan update is the culmination of a planning initiative that started in 2012 when we brought together community members to cast a 10-year vision for the, for Oceanside and discuss the role that the library would play in that vision. This is the second update to that original plan. And the plan before you tonight was developed by the library management team. The development process included reviewing the accomplishments from the current plan, reaffirming the library's mission to engage, inform, connect, and inspire, and to look at the city's goals, vision, and mission, and to ensure that the library's goals and objectives aligned with those goals, that vision, and the mission. And lastly, the plan has been reviewed and approved by the Library Board of Trustees. During the planning process, four themes emerged, and they are access, equity, expansion, and demand. And we took the time to write goals and objectives for each of these themes. For the theme of access, we want to connect customers to a wide variety of programs, services, and activities provided by the library, community agencies, and organizations. Our objectives include creating an early learning and community information space. And in fact, this project is already moving forward with grants from the California State Library, and we hope to open the space in spring of 2021. We want to partner with 211 San Diego and build a community information exchange in Oceanside. And third, we want to expand the work of our Reed's Learning Center to include workforce development. Equity. Organize efforts to advance, normalize, and operationalize racial equity. We've already written a racial equity statement and we have an action plan. Our objectives are to build a library workforce that respects and reflects the diversity of its community, talk about employment opportunities and equity for Black, Indigenous, and people of color, and to meet with partners and organizations that are already working with the BIPOC communities. Expansion. Plan for needed library spaces and outreach sites using all potential opportunities and resources. Our objectives are to develop a library facilities master plan, update the facility's element statement that's part of the city's general plan update, establish a library presence with existing, within existing city facilities, and to create a plan for replacing or refreshing furniture, signage, and technology. Demand. Our fourth theme of demand. Deliver library materials and programs in the format, manner, and location desired to increase circulation and participation. This past year has taught us that we need to be nimble, that we need to be able to make change quickly to meet the needs of our community. Our objects, our objectives are to formalize processes to evaluate the effectiveness of library programs, create a library-wide plan for a popular, high-demand collection, and provide innovative ways for customers to obtain library services and materials. We're in the process of creating an action plan to move these goals and objectives forward. We understand that we may need to reallocate some existing funds and resources to accomplish these goals. We will continue to seek grants. In the last two years, we've received over $200,000 each year in grant funding for different projects. And third, we would, when appropriate, bring items to the city council through the annual budget process to request funding. We're excited to get started on this strategic plan update. Staff and the Library Board of Trustees recommend that the city council approve the library strategic plan update for 2021 to 2023. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
No public on this item.
Thank you. Uh, any motions? Do we have a motion? Any questions? Councilmember Weiss?
I'll move approval of staff recommendation.
I'll second that. Let's vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cosby. The library does so much for our community. Next is item number 16. Approval of a public works agreement with Denali Water Solutions LLC of San Bernardino in an amount not to exceed 2,282,000 for biosolids handling and sludge hauling services. An authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. Mr. Guzman?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and fellow councilmembers. Uh, my name is Rudy Guzman, as you read. Uh, I am currently one of the four utilities, uh, Water Utilities Division managers. I oversee the four treatment plants here in the city as well as the plant maintenance group. And since this is my first presentation, I thought I would introduce myself, uh, a little bit.
Thank you.
So today I will be presenting on the subject of biosolids handling services followed by a request to approve an agreement with Denali Water Solutions in that regard. The staff will be recommending city council approve an agreement to allow Denali Water Solutions to handle, handle and haul solids created at our water and wastewater plants and to authorize the city manager to execute that agreement not to exceed 2,282,000 dollars. So a little bit of background as to why we need to handle solids. A water and wastewater treatment plants do produce water, but in order to produce water, they also produce byproducts. These byproducts or products include solids, biosolids, sludges, and grits and rags. And all of these solid products must, must be dealt with, uh, whether it be reused as fertilizer and land application or disposed of in a landfill. In all cases, though, this does involve transportation, transporting these solid products to other sites outside of Oceanside. Currently, we do transport solids to sites located in California and Arizona. All of our, what we call biosolage, which is, um, treated solids used for fertilizer, go to Arizona currently and also through this next contract. While what we call grits and rags currently go to a landfill in Corona, California. Now, our goal is to reuse as much as possible as fertilizer, but when that is not allowed, then we do send the solids to a landfill. But in all cases, we aim to do this with minimal impact on the environment and at minimal cost. Now, over the years, including the last four years, you know, our decision to use Denali Water Solutions to handle our solids has proven to be the most cost-effective means of solids handling. Their current contract ends on January 31st of this year. And as the slide points out, that contract usually deals with about $850,000 of annual spending for these solids handling services. Now, because the contract was nearing its, or is nearing its end date, the city staff prepared and issued a request for proposal via EBIT board for hand solids handling services for the city of Oceanside. And this was done on November 3rd. And the city received two proposals for, uh, from that RFP, a request for proposal. Now, staff did evaluate both proposals carefully and scored them according to both cost and company qualifications. Denali Water Solutions is being recommended because their proposal costs were significantly lower than the second company's cost. And additionally, they were the only company to offer services to handle our grit and rag solids. The contract will run for two years and five months, but it does have the option to be renewed up to three times with a two-year extension each of those times. Now, although the total solids handling cost can only be estimated based on past cost, uh, we did use that past cost to come up with a not-to-exceed amount for the contract of $2,282,000. Majority of this funding will come from the two wastewater plants O and M budgets, with a small amount coming from our larger water plant budget or account. So that concludes my presentation. And with that, staff recommends that city council approve a public works agreement with Denali Water Solutions LLC of San Bernardino in an amount not to exceed 2,282,000 for biosolids handling and sludge hauling services and authorize the city manager to execute this agreement. Thank you, and I am available for any question.
Thank you, Guzman, Mr. Guzman. Do we have any, uh, comments from the public?
No public on this item.
Thank you. Is it normal to, to have two-year and then extensions contracts for this?
Um, I wouldn't say it's normal, but it seems like that's what we've been doing in the city of Oceanside for several years. Um, it does allow you to, uh, keep the prices somewhat competitive, but not tie you down to one, to one provider or one contractor.
Right, there were only two.
It seems to have worked out for us. I'm sorry.
Sorry, there were only two, and the other one was much higher, so. Uh, Councilmember Weiss?
I have a question. What happens when it gets hauled to where it gets hauled? Either in Arizona or-
The landfill?
What do they do with it?
Oh, what do they do with it in Arizona?
Yeah.
So most of it, by far, is used for fertilizer, land application, or crops that, you know, don't come in contact with, uh, with the material and not for human consumption. So things like alfalfa or even, uh, I've seen they've used it for chili, for color. And, uh, so things like that, cotton, all these different products that aren't necessarily for human consumption. That's what the biosolids are used for. And they love it in Arizona. It has a lot of micronutrients and seem to really appreciate it.
Well, it must get a lot of it because we're not the only ones that ship it there.
No, no, you're right.
I'll move approval of staff recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Please vote. Thank you, Mr. Guzman.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. Next item is item number 17. And that is, uh, request for direction regarding, um, from the city clerk regarding the interview procedure for the District 1 vacancy workshop scheduled for January 27th. That's next Wednesday, um, at 2:00 PM. Mr. Navarro? By the way, do we have public comment on this?
Uh, we originally did have one speaker, but they have withdrawn their request of speak.
Did you say that there is one comment or that comment's been withdrawn?
That comment's been withdrawn.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Zeb Navarro, City Clerk, here to present item number The city clerk's office is requesting the city council's direction on the interview procedure for the District One vacancy workshop currently scheduled for January 27th at 2:00 p.m. Little background on how we got here, on December 16th, the council declared a vacancy for the District One city council seat and directed the city clerk's office to accept the applications in accordance with council policy 100-61. The deadline was January 8th at 4:00, and all applications that were submitted by the deadline were reviewed for voter registration and District One residents. Currently, right now, a total of 36 applications were accepted by the city clerk's office. As of before this council meeting, it's now down to 35. We did have one applicant pull their application. So with that, we do have a couple of options on how to proceed with interview procedure. The first option is to conduct interviews over a two-day period with applicants being randomly divided into two groups with interviews of 10 minutes each. This option would evenly divide the applicant interview time to three hours per day, with time still dedicated to public comment, council deliberation, and as needed, breaks. Second option is, since the applicants have already responded to the three standard questions in their application, the city council could cut the interview time down to five minutes for each applicant. The applicant would be given time for a one-minute presentation and one minute to respond to each of the four council member's questions. Under this option, approximately three hours is required for applicant interviews plus additional time for public comment, breaks, and council discussion. The third option is a hybrid of the previous options. The city council could cut the interview time down to five minutes per applicant and interview 18 applicants on each day. This option would make the applicant interview time approximately one and a half hours per day, including time for public comment, breaks, and city council discussion. Staff recommends that the city council discuss options for the interview procedure for the District One vacancy and provide direction to the city clerk's office. And I am available for answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We could also start earlier on, on the 27th too, right? So Councilmember Rodriguez, what is your, which option do you like?
Yeah, I'll just start this conversation. You know, I appreciate the city's efforts in being more transparent on this appointment process, and, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction. We have the applications, you know, very, very well done by the clerk on getting all the applications online, the resumes, all the information for the public to vet. I know my office has been thoroughly reviewing all the applications, and I'm assuming my colleagues are reviewing the applications, and from what I hear, they're actually already interviewing or talking by phone. I know I've been approached by at least a dozen of the candidates just to call and introduce theirself or what have you. I have no interest, and I think it's not the best use of this council's time to do 10-minute interviews of 36 applicants. I think that would be extremely unproductive. Everything will eventually be blurred. I think a much more productive pathway is by the special counsel meeting date, if, and after the public portion of the meeting, each council member to submit to the clerk at the meeting, submit to the clerk up to five names each that they like or that they would be more interested in having interviews with, and then in a public fashion, the clerk would consolidate those, and obviously, there's going to be most likely some overlap. And we only interview candidates that have that overlap, and that way, our time can be productive in interviewing individuals that there seems to be some overlap or consensus from the dais. You know, we have a wide spectrum of applicants. Some of the applicants think they're applying for a job, they think it's a salaried employee job, and they, they really don't have the, the, in my conversation, the concept that this is a, you know, council position making policy decisions. And so I think it's just, in, in this council's best interest, the most productive use of our time is to hear public comment, hear public feedback. I'm getting a lot of emails already, which is great, and there's ample opportunity between now and the special council meeting. If, if you really want to sit down with one of the candidates, go for it, or call them by phone, you know, since we're in a COVID environment. And that's all I have to say on that, but I have no interest in holding 36 five-minute interviews. I think that's a waste of time.
Councilmember Weiss?
I have a question for the city clerk. So I presume that as we do these interviews, they will be Zoom, or whether the candidates come in or not, this is irrelevant to me, but it'll be broadcast on Zoom?
That is correct.
So anybody other than the first candidate's going to know what our questions are going to be?
That is correct.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
So they'll be prepared. Council, Deputy Mayor, Keim, did you want to say something?
Thank you. I was gonna hear your thoughts first, Mayor Sanchez. I think it's, there's a good point. If, I don't have an issue going through 36 at five minutes apiece, I do think it might not be the most productive. If we do hash out something where at least all four of us get to know that there are five, say there are five separate ones, they at least get to do those five interviews, I think that makes it more equitable so that you know that your, your five top ones will be interviewed. I think that makes it a more reasonable approach. Was that your intention, Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, was just to, to, to be able to just trim it down so that our usage of time can be the most productive, and I'm gonna have a hard time personally coming up with five names, but the way, you know, I think it should be worded is just up to five names, and then the city clerk would consolidate those and eliminate those that's name were not, was not brought up. And, you know, at most, we'd have 20 interviews. If everybody has different choices, or, you know, I think a lot of those are going to overlap, and we're going to be realistically down to like eight to 12 interviews is my estimation.
So I'd like to weigh in at this point because we're, it seems like we're going to go around again, but the reason why staff came up with this recommendation with respect to process was based, I believe, on the comments that were made by the public in wanting transparency. What is being suggested is basically the same thing that we came up with or that was recommended the last time that we were here, because we were asked to come up with a list of, I think, five, and then where they were overlap, those were the only five that were considered. Now, the difference is that those five people weren't heard, but I think there is going to still be a transparency issue because, you know, why not hear from the, from the balance? So that, that's my concern, is that we more or less promised a process of transparency to the public, and we're, we're going to cut that down to five people. That's my concern. So Councilmember Weiss?
So I guess my question, a separate one to the city clerk, if we were to give five names, I am presuming that you would publicly display the council member and the five names they put up?
Yes.
Okay, so everyone would know which names each one of us put up?
Yes.
Like we did last time?
Yeah. Make it as transparent as possible, if that is the council's direction.
Yeah, I think it should be. And that, and that each, each of the five, let's just presume there is no overlap, that's how you get to 20, we'd be looking at 20, but as the overlap occurs, but we, if I put a name up and no one else did, would that person still get interviewed?
Yes.
Then I was, I'll second that motion.
Okay. And I would just end with, after the interviews are complete, then we would just have a discussion on the dais and potentially make motions from that, that point on, either to appoint or not, and we would, we have limited time before a special election would have to be moved on. Is that correct, Mr. Mon?
I think the date is February 12th is your last day to either make the appointment or adopt the resolutions. I think that's a Friday, though. Am I missed, am I right on that, Zeb? Yeah. So I think February 12th is the last weekday that we can hold a meeting, special meeting to do that.
Got it.
Deputy Mayor Keim?
I have to respectfully disagree with you, Mayor Sanchez, about comparing it to the last one. Because of the last one, when I was appointed, I brought forward that council appointment process, and it was for transparency. And so this is what's happened so far. We've had a publicly posted vacancy, we've had public applications that the public has access to and the resumes available. We will be picking from that pool, as would any job applicant. So if you are hiring for a high-level senior management position, I would imagine you're probably not going to interview 36 people, you're gonna whittle it down somewhat to be more effective, ask better questions, better time management. But we know from the pool which we're picking, we know who's applied, it's very transparent, it's just trying to make sure that we have the best use of our time, and I think it, so it's, it's completely different than the last one, which is why I'm glad we had the process written and approved. And I think the public, it was, gets council policy, the public knows what it is, and it's worked well so far. I want to thank our city clerk, Mr. Navarro, for facilitating that and give him the opportunity to opine if he so chooses on, on an efficient process, since you're the one managing this process.
Yeah, my comments were towards, addressed to the deviation of the policy that was adopted by the council that's being recommended now, not to the actual policy itself, so.
I would just like to get some clarification. So the motion right now is, at the next special workshop, all the candidates will be on Zoom, and the council will pick five each, up to five each, of the candidates that are there to interview on Zoom, since they're all going to be there anyways. And I will publicly display what council member picked, what candidate. Now, for those candidates that are picked, are we doing the full 10-minute interview or just the five-minute interview? Just the five-minute interview. So I am aware of the direction that we are going to get, and the reason why I brought this forward to the council was, I knew you guys didn't want to have a six to eight-hour meeting, so I just wanted to know what your desire was and your direction was in interviewing these applicants for the position.
Mr. Navarro, can I ask you one more question?
Sure.
Does this, do you think we're deviating from the policy that we created, or do you think this is inconsistent with the spirit of that policy or the letter of that policy?
I don't think his personal opinion is relevant here.
He's...
Well, I do have to be, I do have to be a neutral party in this and also facilitate. My, my job as the city clerk is to facilitate this process. This is a council policy, the council could choose to modify it and follow it if it needs to. It's not really essentially a code or an ordinance. So the direction the council wants to move forward with, we, the city clerk's office has to abide by, and we will facilitate the process in whatever manner that the city council moves forward with. You give us a direction, my staff and I will be there to, to work it out, whatever you guys want to do.
Great answer, Mr. Navarro.
So there is, was that a motion, Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, it was. I just want to clarify.
And that was the second, Deputy Mayor Keim?
No.
No.
Okay.
Councilmember Weiss did.
Councilmember Weiss.
I want, just back up one second. So we start the council meeting, every applicant's face is going to be up there, kind of a thing, and then?
They'll, they'll be in the Zoom call.
Okay, and then those who are not a part of the interview, they're going to be just exited from the?
They choose to leave the Zoom call or view as participants.
Just like the public, right?
Just like the public.
Got it, okay.
And of course, public will be allowed in the Zoom call because the council does have to take public comment on this issue.
Perfect. Yep, we're good.
Well, I will say, make one more statement, that is, not knowing who those 20 are going to be, I can't, I thought we were going to have all 36, or excuse me, 35, my apologies. So now that I, that it could be 20 or less, it's incumbent upon me to try to guess who those are and then conduct interviews of 30, all 36, oh, excuse me, all 35, if I wish to hear from all of the candidates, to be able to sit, to decide on behalf of the voters of the District, of District One, which one is the best candidate. And as the person who has been representing District One, you know, I have difficulty with that, I really do. So I, I feel that this is not transparent, we're giving up a lot to do this, and I, I haven't started interviews. I did not believe I would have to do that if we, in fact, were going to do this together. So either I'm going to try to do 35 interviews between tomorrow and next Wednesday, or no interviews, because it would be really highly unfair to interview just a handful of people. So we have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor Keim?
So I, I think we, if, I mean, going through, I've gone through every application so far, thoroughly, and I, I think it's very, I mean, it'd be, it's responsible, it's prudent that we take the time and at least somewhat start in there.
Oh, I, I am doing that, I'm just saying that I, I've not included interviewing every single one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, continuing. But because I don't want this to go to two-two, and I want to be as, I made the motion, do you have a preference of those three options, is there something you'd prefer? Mayor Sanchez?
I'm, I've actually cleared both days, so I could, I could be here two days, or we could do it all in three hours.
So is that?
But I was hoping that we would be fair to everyone.
Mayor Sanchez, do you have a preference?
I do have those two days.
Okay.
Cleared.
I, I'm comfortable if it's gonna, if it's gonna increase transparency and trust and have a 4-0 vote, I don't know if that's likely, but I, I could do option two. It's three hours, we do five minutes.
I'd like to speak, my lights on.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I just heard Mayor Sanchez say she's cleared two days. Take two days, set up 10-minute interviews with your council aide and do Zoom calls, if you have the time to do that. I don't, and I have no desire to do 10-minute interviews when I have the capacity to do that outside on my own. It's just, this is, this is a very transparent process, and you're trying to make it not because you don't even want an appointment, you want an election. You made that clear at the last meeting, so this is all waste. There was a motion and a second, let's, let's move this on and be done with it. It, this is very simple.
First of all, we already have this set for one day, so I'm, it would be the second day that I anticipated based on the, the staff recommendation, I did clear the second
Motion approved, three, one. Sanchez, no.
Okay, next, we have no ordinances for adoption, and we do not have any advanced written requests to reserve time to speak. Do we have any?
But we do have a public hearing.
Oh, it is, we do have a public hearing, and it's, okay. My apologies, it's 6 o'clock, it's a little after 6 o'clock. I'd like to open this public hearing on item 18. Disclosures, please.
Staff, and we received some correspondence this afternoon. Staff and the public?
Staff? I'm sorry, I did have some public comments as well.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the public, I'm Scott Nightingale, here to present agenda item number 18 for the adoption of resolution, Planning Commission Resolution 20P35, approving the submitted closure impact report for the mobile home park closure permit, conditional use permit. CUP 20-0019, to allow the conversion of a vacant mobile home park slash trailer park, also known as the LaPlaya Trailer Park, to a 20-unit condominium development. A little background on the item here, on November 23rd, the Planning Commission reviewed the tentative map, development plan, and regular coastal permit to construct a 20-unit development, continued upon the city council approving the mobile home park closure permit. The Planning Commission voted 7-0 to approve this entitlement, and the commission recommended that the city council approve the submitted mobile home park closure permit. And the reason we are here for the use permit, pursuant to Oceanside Zoning Ordinance Section 3403, the Planning Commission shall make recommendations to the city council for the approval or disapproval of the closure impact report and the mobile home park closure permit through the approval of a use permit. The Planning Commission's action on this entitlement for the development plan, tentative map, and coastal permit are final and are subject to no further appeal. Also, the Planning Commission received a comment letter and verbal correspondence that were raised during this Planning Commission hearing by a concerned resident. They were, the concerns were regarding the history of the removal of the trailer park and the compliance with the change of Article 34 in the zoning ordinance. Within the staff report, there is an analysis that addresses the concerned residents' issues, and we can go into that if needed. Staff, in conjunction with the city attorney, determined that the trailer park is subject to the applicable regulations outlined in Article 34, and the use permit is necessary to change this use from a vacant mobile home park to the proposed multifamily development. The park owner gained sole possession of the 19 trailer units prior to the demolition of the units, and in association with the laundry room, office structure, and all the other associated structures on site. All of the 19 tenants residing at the park vacated the site prior to 2017, thus there are no residents who will be displaced by this project. As such, the conversion of the park will not result in the displacement of any residents. Per the closure impact report, the tenants vacated the site on their own at least two years prior to the removal. Also, none of the residents owned the actual units, therefore, no tenants remained at the site at the time the owner actually purchased the site and prior to submission of this conditional use permit. Here's an image of the site prior to the units being removed, this would be prior to 2017. The site is located southwest of South Tremont Street and West Street at 1011 South Tremont Street. The site is currently vacant, and it is .57 acres in size, was previously used as the trailer park since the 1950s. Here's an images of the existing park as it sits today. The site contains 19, used to contain 19 trailers that were vacated by 2018. According to historical report prepared by a local historian, the site and the previously LaPlaya Trailer Park does not hold any historical significance and is warrant for removal of the units. The site was left in disrepair after all the tenants vacated the site in 2017. Since then, the property became a public nuisance and a code enforcement and policing issue, so the owner of the site had no choice but to remove the units due to the constant break-ins and the vagrant activities. Here's some images of the surrounding area. As you can see, there's some newly constructed condominiums, does have an eclectic mix of multifamily and older single-family within the area, and there's also a trailer park located just south of this. It's not part of this closure proposal, and this is the site. From reviewing the project, staff review the project based on the following, general plan, land use, and housing element compliance. The closure impact report concludes that the conversion of the 19-space mobile home park into a 20-unit multifamily development will not result or contribute to a shortage of housing opportunities and choices for low-income to moderate-income households within the local jurisdiction, because the project site has been vacant for over two years, and the new project will be required to contribute to the city's affordable housing stock by compliance with the inclusionary housing provisions in the City Code, Chapter 14C. Also complies with the zoning ordinance pursuant to zoning Article 34, the conversion of the existing rental mobile home park to another use shall require a use permit reviewed by the Planning Commission and approved by the city council. The mobile home park conversion meets the seven findings that are outlined in the staff report and also outlined in Section 3405, in addition to the required findings in the use permit, pursuant to Section 4105. With that, staff asks that city council adopt the resolution confirming Planning Commission Resolution 2020 P35, approving submitted closure impact report for the mobile home park closure permit to allow for the conversion of a vacant mobile home park, also known as the LaPlaya Trailer Park. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Did we have any correspondence or petitions on this matter?
All correspondence has been forwarded to the council prior to the meeting, and there is no public comment on this item.
No public comment. Any questions by the council before, start with Mr., with Councilmember Rodriguez? I did have a few questions. So this was used as a mobile home park since the 1950s up until 20, well, the report says 2017, you indicated 2018. How many of the units were under our rent control ordinance?
None of the units were actually, at the time of the owner purchasing the property in 2017, the actual units were owned by the previous owner, and the new owner just took those over.
Right.
So there was no actual units that were under rent control.
Before this owner, what was the maximum number of units that were under the rent control ordinance, if any?
I believe there was an email from the, from Megan in Housing that there was one unit back in 20, prior to 2013, that was actually owned by an actual tenant himself, him or herself.
So, in the history of this mobile home park, there was only one unit that was under our rent control ordinance?
That we found, yes.
In the history?
Mayor Sanchez, we looked into that issue shortly before the hearing, and Ms. Hamilton in my office, along with Megan Crooks and Neighborhood Services, did identify one unit in 2007. That was privately owned, the balance of them in 2007 were owned by the park owner.
Okay, and then shortly after that, it was...
Then it was eventually acquired, that one unit was at some point acquired. I don't know what year that was, I believe, sometime between...
Before 2017.
Correct.
All right, thank you. I'm going to, okay, so, questions? Did you have questions? Did you want to start the discussion? Okay, I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, I support staff recommendations, I just have a couple of questions. The developer is obviously going to have to go through the entitlement process for the 20 units, or has that already been done?
That's occurred already.
That's occurred, okay. How many units in this, it looks like it's a median density, how many units are they able to build up to? Is it 20?
It's one unit per 1,000, so it's 43 dwelling units per acre. You got a half acre there, so they're about 20, and that's what they're proposing as a part of the Planning Commission approval.
The coast highway plan and the density cap modifications we made, did that not influence this parcel?
Uh...
I guess what I'm looking at is, is there the ability, if the developer wants to, going through, again, the public process, to have more units? That's a half acre, and it's in an area with other high densities, why not, you know, allow that to be considered? Again, I'm not trying to change them up here, but I do have that question.
Mayor and council members, the project site is outside of the downtown area, so it's not subject to the density cap that was eliminated. Furthermore, it's not within the coastal incentive district that the council adopted to revitalize the coast highway.
What about density bonus, by adding an affordable?
It is eligible for a density bonus.
So how many units could they go up to if they did incorporate a density bonus with onsite? Obviously, we'd have to modify our inclusionary housing ordinance, but what would they be able to go up to if they did reapply and added a density bonus?
I believe prior to the current legislation that became effective on January 1st, the density bonus maximum was 35%. They would have, and I forget the percent of units that they would have to restrict in order to get that density bonus. I believe that density bonus has gone up higher now with recent legislation, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Got it. So they would be eligible for that if they chose to, to apply back through that entitlement process with the city?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Was, move... To adopt the resolution?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Yeah, those were my concerns, was whether or not any of the units were previously under the rent control ordinance, because a park previously was closed, and all the requirements for closure that would include reasonable accommodations, like assistance in moving and also acquiring the coach itself, those all go away within a year. And so the one that was able to close waited two years so that he wouldn't have to pay anything to the mobile home park residents, and it was a really sad thing that happened back then. So I understand from staff that that is not the situation here, that it was one person and one unit, one coach, that was privately owned and was probably not privately owned for very long. So I'm going to go ahead and support the motion. Please vote. Thank you. Do we have public comments?
Yes, we only have one...
On off-agenda items?
We have one public communication off-agenda, and that is from Cindy Rocco. So Cindy, are you there?
Yes, I am, I'm sorry for the quality.
All right, no problem.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Okay, I really debated about doing this today, and I'm just, I just have to, because I just see a display of, an underlying display of a lack of cooperation even within our chamber. And, you know, I recently was made aware that, you know, during the summer, last summer, we had, well, first of all, I just want to read something really quick. The American Legion has no room for hate in its membership, nor will we silently tolerate hate in any form. It morphs into, into an affront to both legionnaires and our communities, states, and nations. This is the individual who was just, he's a Proud Boy, okay? Yorba Linda, well, he's holding up a trophy skull cap. Here, he was just in DC, and this is not, you know, I'm a staunch Republican, but I'm going to tell you, I'm not going to stay silent for hate, and he has a trophy, you can't see it, but there's, it's in the tribute, I think, there's blood on the knuckles, that's why he's Mickey Knuckles. Also, here's, here's the real concern about having a Proud Boy, this guy's from Escondido or Temecula, is that this guy, this is what I recently found out, was in our backyard. He was at Oceanside in the summer, early in the summer, you know, I mean, there's evidence of it that has just emerged, and this guy is a hater. He's one that, this is not just some small guy, and there's an association with one of our officials, with this individual, loose ties, but there's enough of evidence to show when someone says, hey, bro, oh, no, hey, thanks for coming, brother, and shakes hands and hugs, that kind of gives, that scares me, and I'm sorry, you know, Christopher, I know you have a family, and you have all that, but with all due respect, you know, I was nervous because I know what I'm talking, you know, group I'm talking about, but, you know, and as a Republican, you know, I am definitely Republican, but I won't tolerate or sit quiet for hate. And I just, you know, you said one time, if you have issues, be transparent in this room, and I was really scared to do this, and I'm just ad-libbing it, but that's all I said. This, I don't know, I just see the way you're, you get all angry and everything in the chamber, and I just, I get nervous that you're governing our city, and you have, also, you have this guy down, you organize...
Cindy, your three minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Cindy.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, bye.
No other comments?
No other comments.
Thank you. So we're up to mayor and our council member items, any, or, excuse me, no items, but how about comments? Anybody have a comment? Nope? Okay, I do have one, and I think we all got the news that Bill Wagner of our community, just a very strong presence in our committee for so many years, was a former, was an administrator at Oceanside Unified, passed away on January 12th. I have to say, he was around when I was going to school. He was someone that just would give so much of himself and supported our diverse communities in sports, football, swimming, he was a champion of the Aquatic Center and was so thrilled that, at the groundbreaking, and was just so, so supportive. He has been going to every single one of Laurel Elementary's Hall of Fame events every year to honor someone who went to Laurel Elementary and who has done wonderful things. So, Bill Wagner, at the age of 89, after battle with Parkinson's, currently passed away. Currently, Mr. Wagner's son, Scott Wagner, is a teacher at MLK, his son, Dave Wagner, is a teacher at OHS, and his daughter-in-law, Claudia Wagner, is a teacher at North Terrace. Many of us knew him, he just changed so many lives here in Oceanside, so many kids, just helped them to make the mark in Oceanside. We're going to miss you, Mr. Wagner, we're all going to miss you, and I'd like us to have a moment of silence and, as we adjourn to the next council get-together, which would be council workshop at 2:00 on January 27th, 2021, in honor of you, Mr. Wagner.